Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, are you looking for a motion to have both approved?
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor by Gina, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Agenda this evening?
Two additions to the agenda, Toby.
Scott, what do you got?
One of them is a resolution for a street project coming up. And the other is something that Brian's going to discuss during his fire department department agenda will be for resignation.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, any more motion to approve? Make that motion. Motion on the floor by Mike, get a second. Seconded by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Done well with the agenda back. First item on the agenda, we have Chief Brian Tolder. Some new hires, I believe, we hired some officers.
Yes, our annual replacement or selection process for the assistant chief and the secretary's position were up this year. Our secretary's position was currently held by Todd Primusberger who had his three-year terms limit had expired, so he had opened that up with the application from Pablo Tremba, and he took over at the last meeting. So we'll need a motion by you guys to accept him, as well as Assistant Chief Greg Furman also did not reapply, and Chris Young applied for that position. So we've got those two individuals that I'm very happy to see step up, and they'll do a fine job for the fire department.
Good. So what we have then is Pablo Tremba, first of all. Went through the application process and everything, so Brian, your recommendation is to hire Pablo Tremba as fire department secretary.
That's correct.
We will need a motion on the floor to get that done.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Donnie, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Next, we have Chris Young, who would be same, only with the assistant chief's position.
Correct.
We will need a motion to have that approved.
Make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Stephanie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. With that portion done, I guess I'd like to thank Todd Primusberger and Greg Furman for all the years that they've had their officer position. I know Greg's been an officer for many years, and Todd as well. So great thank you to you guys. On behalf of the city, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Donnie, you have to reopen it up for...
Yes, I opened up the application process before the opening that we created with Chris Young moving to the assistant chief for the training officer. And that will be to fulfill a one-year term to make sure we stay on that same cycle of officers. So that'll close on the 30th of July, and we'll do the process at that time as well. I also have a resignation letter today that I received that I forwarded to Scott, and you guys probably have that. It is from Jill Potashik. She has moved out of the coverage area and the time limit that we have, and has submitted a resignation letter defective today. So just wanted to make you guys aware of that, and wish her the best of luck. She's been on the department for about eight years.
Guess I would ask the city council, tentatively, do we accept this resignation? And Brian, can we try and get ahold of Jill and see if she could give us something with her signature on it?
Sure, my kid. I could have her swing into City Hall here on one of her trips, and it's not...
Whatever. Consider one or something that we've got eyes on or teeth crossed, and make sure that that's her intention. So I guess we need a motion on the floor to accept Jill Potashik's resignation.
Make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Gina.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Like to thank Jill for eight years she had on the fire department. She was a good productive member, so we'll wish her the best in her new endeavors.
Yes. And then the new truck has an update. I did talk to Hyman and Rosenbauer today. We're looking at maybe an expected trip to check out the truck in probably four to six weeks, to make any changes or to look at what we've got spec-ed out as in this stage is right now of Jesse Electrical. So it is in the line, and it's moving forward.
What's the expected completion date?
We're still looking at best into that September range.
Won't be here for the tree.
No, most likely not.
You'll leave it empty spot.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll let her know that maybe she's...
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next item on the agenda, we have the Ginkel property. We have Todd Primusberger here, representing the Ginkel family. Hi, Todd.
How's it going?
Good, both chair. If you recall, at the last meeting, I asked the council to take a look into giving Todd a yes or a no on whether or not we wanted to purchase this lot, and if so, that order to its part dollars, so we'll go for discussion.
Were you able to find anything else to talk about? Kind of has to do with all the city updating the property?
Yeah, if the city, the way I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, or actually, why don't you just talk about it, Scott? You were the one who thought of the information.
I looked into the property. I looked into whether or not, Mike, you want to update us, come back on this? Yep. The land was donated to the city. So we're talking about the park right now. If the land was donated to the city, it cannot be turned into something other than a park. But if the city owned the land and turned it into a park, as it is, the city owned it before, the city can do what it needs to if we need to expand the fire hall, et cetera, on that property. So how do I figure that part out? Looking with the county and stuff in regards to trying to figure out whether or not that land was donated. So looking at where the fire hall is now.
Correct.
And if we wanted to expand fire hall from the building to park, because that would be the only option really, would be to go that direction. So I did kind of get some answers regarding, if you might know when the fire hall was built, and trying to look into that avenue.
In a dome for a couple of years' span, at least, we know where to start looking, you know? So it makes it really tough right now.
About seventy-four, seventy-five.
Seventy-nine. I don't know when the land was actually acquired, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, title work, I mean, I can find title, I can find the title transferred and find out how it was, what the value was, or what they paid for it back then. But I thought it was all Karsh property.
It was.
And then the fire hall went on that, and then they, Billik had something to do with Pierce, so they made it Billik Park.
Okay, so it wasn't, you don't think it was a donation tie from the...
I don't think it was, but I don't know, I can't say a hundred percent.
I think the city got it, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Wonder if I would talk that one...
It was all Karsh property, and then it was the dry cleaner, it was Karsh, and then the dry cleaner.
I wonder if...
To the north, yeah.
Wonder then if the city would have acquired that property? I mean, part of it was Legion's to the north.
See, that was Larry's, and I think Larry donated to the Legion, Fred might remember.
Yeah. I wonder if the city in seventy-eight, seventy-five, around that time would have bought that whole section in there, Billik Park in where the fire hall is in right now. I don't know, I think that will have to research maybe a little bit, but right now, I guess we're, we need to let Todd what we want to, no, we plan on acquiring that property as more or not, so. What do you guys want to do?
We're getting a new fire truck, getting rid of two. It's going to open up.
Fire hall in the road.
And the fire hall definitely needs insulation, or, I mean, it's a cornfield, we lose a lot of, a lot of heat in there in the winter. But, you know...
We are storing some fire equipment up at City Hall, to, or City Shop.
Yeah, that one pump is up there.
For me, why, I guess, looking at the other projects that we have going, looking at the possibility of requiring, I would be a no, because if we're going to try to get a bigger parcel of land, we're going to need all the resources we have. So for me, it would be a no.
Good point.
I just, I guess I don't see no need for it also right now, but, you know.
I made my opinion quite clear last time, unless we have something definite we want to use it for, I don't think we are in the business of buying and selling any property. So I, if we don't have a use for it, I guess then...
I think we've kind of determined what the, you know, we would want to use it for. So, yeah, that's what we're saying.
Well, this is going to know where you're at.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All righty. No problem.
Everything's that accurate. We've got a couple different gambling, I'm sorry, fire department region requests. Forgot about these guys. How you doing? How I can forget about you guys?
That's the good looking group over there.
Yeah, always smiling. Well, I guess, first of all, we want to thank the council and the city for making the park and the memorial look so nice.
Oh, beautiful.
And we kind of like the fire department for, it was raining, and you gave us shelter. And so getting out the kind of business, Ron's got a real steel there, too. But anyway, there's been some misunderstanding in regards to that fountain.
Okay.
And our last meeting, Jim Gary brought it up because he belongs to Lyons, and we basically kind of tabled it because some thought we have extra money left over, okay? But the thing is, down the line, we might want to do something. Put a bench, put some English flags, you know? And the other thing is, we don't need the money, we now transfer the cities to an account to keep the thing going, you know, for upkeep and whatever. But it cannot be used to buy a fountain.
Okay, so where were we on the whole Fulton discussion?
I heard stuff back and forth that I think there's a lot of errors, and I think we have, you know, getting things straightened out.
One thing I think we decided is it probably wouldn't be a good spot to put the Lyons fountain back there, because we thought that we want to keep the Lyons fountain here in town. I think it's a little nice thing to have, but we didn't think that right in front of the monument, you know, was maybe a good place for it. And we talked about maybe getting a handicap or a low-profile one and putting back there, but I guess I never, I don't...
Bob brought the pictures, our brochure in for us.
Yep, that's right.
We looked at that. The Lyons have agreed to buy it, but it was not a handicap accessible.
Okay.
And there was talk about the handicap accessible. I think that's where Jim thought that you were going to, your organization would...
The thing is, Jim had the feeling that the money that we had left over could be used to it then. But to me, that's sacred money. That money was donated for that memorial.
Yep.
These growths, those kids, they donated about $2,000 bucks. And if you ever got back to them, that you bought a water fountain with their money, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Then you could go.
What's the difference on that? I didn't know anything about handicap accessible.
Come on, Bob. Say, pick up.
Just kind of the history on that, I guess. Fred, I had talked to Jim, and Jim expressed there's fourteen hundred available from the Lyons, and he thought it might be possible to...
Well, at our meeting, I said if we were going to go and tip in on it, it would come to our savings. The fact is, we talked about that lot. I was involved in telling you guys that lot. Have you ever, yeah.
Well, you know the, you know the history then.
Yeah, in fact, that abstract was so interesting. The Smithbauer that owned it at one time borrowed the money from Aldis, that they used to own Paulroom. Of course, you guys are too young to understand that, so you don't... But anyway, the one thing that could be done, and Ron's going to talk about that, and that is, that money we have quite a bit left over, okay? People were very generous. A lot of us gave a lot of money, too. But anyway, that money could be used to move that height over a little bit towards the fire hall, so it isn't set in front of the memorial, because that is for the memorial. But anyway, I'm stopped now because Ron's going to talk.
I think Fred just about said...
Hi, Ron.
We're getting a lot of compliments on the memorial. Beautiful. Very nice. Other towns, other people. And I don't think it looks too nice to be put up there.
Okay, so what you're talking about, then, Ron...
We don't care if you put it on the side of the fountain, but not in front of that memorial. That would look very unpatriotic, I feel.
Okay. How tall is this fountain? If it's handicap, it's got to be lower.
Yeah. What is for the wall?
It's about, it's about, yeah, it's about fourteen inches wide, there's a higher one and a lower one. Forty inches. Fourteen inches. Forty inches. You're talking, it's over the height of the table.
But when you're looking straight on it, the park may see the water fountain.
Well, I understand. But I just want to be short here, but I talked to people, and they said it wouldn't look very good, putting it up to something right in front of that memorial. If you want to put it on the side someplace, fine, I don't, we don't care.
So what you're asking, just so I got this straight, and the council understands you're asking for the city to move it one way or the other, and take care of that?
Close, maybe right by the sidewalk, or it goes in between.
Bob, it's your opinion if we move it where?
Memorial, I don't, you know, but not in front of that. You don't mind that.
This is the call.
Thank you.
Thank you. But Toby, I believe that we could use some of our money to help with the expense of that.
To move it.
So water lines are all piped where the Lyons sat, correct?
Correct.
There's a little drain there with some rock and pipe, so...
That's what I was going to ask you, Bob, I notice if we took and just came up with a, higher with a ninety under grade, or, you know, a couple feet down, or whatever the case may be, and then moved it, is there a way you could drain it and blow it out so you wouldn't have to? Scott maybe knows more about that type of thing, too.
You only use it when in summer, right?
Right, but we'd have to figure out a way to shut it down and drain it out. So if we, if we came up off the main right now, or the service line that comes in, and we came up a couple feet, or three feet, or whatever, and then ran, it'd be susceptible to frost, and we'd have to figure out a way to drain it out in the wintertime, so.
There's ways to do that.
What's that, Scott?
I said, yeah, there's ways to do that.
Okay.
I was just thinking, of course, is it, that fountain's trenching and all kinds of other stuff, if there was a way to get the water line over by the gazebo and have the water fountain back there, instead of up in front of every, you know? But there's not, I'm sure there's not an easy way to do that.
Well, the issue I see with moving it towards the driveway of the fire hall is, we push snow there in the winter, too, you know? I mean, there's got to be...
I just, like I say, if there was a way, because the gazebo people go sit there, you're going to go over there.
And I would agree with you, Steph, it wouldn't be nice to have it back in centrally located in the park or something.
How can you get the water line over there is the problem.
So we got an...
Wouldn't it be okay with you guys if we tabled this to the next meeting, so we could actually log in?
Fine, fine, we're not in a big hurry. We're just, you see what we're calling...
The fountain's not been purchased yet, or it has?
No.
Correct. We're just looking, searching it.
The fact is, I think the only time that fountain was used, when it was the Lyons, so these kids could stick their head in there and shoot the water, right?
A lot of people left stuff up there.
Because nowadays, you know, people, they always bottled water.
Yeah. Yeah, if we could do that, it'd give us an idea of where we should put it, and how we're going to pay for that, or anything, too.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
We got out of your way, and I...
Thank you, guys, very much.
We thank you for your time.
No, absolutely.
And like I say, we really thank you for, you know, the cooperation you've given us, you know?
Take care.
Like I told her, she did a good job.
Terry?
You bet. You know, she really made the thing complete. In fact, because I made many copies of that article and sent it to my kids, especially who the old man's name mentioned, right?
Thank you, Fred.
You bet.
God love Fred.
Whoa, it's Randy!
Hi, hi.
Turn off the bell, Scott. I go, Scott, turn off the bell.
We've got a couple of gambling permits. I believe there's two for Holy Trinity.
There is actually three.
Oh, there's three? Okay.
Do them all at once, or do them all separate?
Sure, yeah, we could do all at once. One was for raffle board and bingo and...
Three different bits there. Two this year, one that year.
You have the break here for the...
Yep.
Steak and wine.
Steak and wine. And the last one is the raffle in the spring of the year.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we approve the gambling permits for St. Joseph's Church.
Motion on the floor by Donnie, can we get a second?
Not second.
Seconded by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have an energy insights update. Looks like we have some things for Ripsaw here, we'll rebate a few hundred bucks, is that what I read, right?
Yes, okay, so I wanted to just share this with all you, the council, even Bob. We discussed, if you look, actually, so first off, there is a rebate, it's three hundred some dollars, three hundred thirty-nine, over some forty-seven cents, a rebate to replace a mower for Ripsaw. So I think that was, this is the second one they submitted. The first one was like a twenty-five-year payback that was much too long for us. This is more in our range. But the main reason why I wanted to put this into the packet was, we wanted to see where we were at in regards to our savings, to compare our energy savings. If you look at the first page in your agenda, then toward the bottom, forty-one percent with this project, if we do with, with Ripsaw, we'd be at forty-eight percent. I think if we try and shoot for that C, C minus range, seventy percent, give or take, then we're at least, you know, we're making an attempt, I can write a letter saying this is what we're doing, and it...
It is a recommendation at the goal, it's not a mandate.
Correct, but there's processes at the goal.
Absolutely.
So as long as we attempt to make, make savings, which we're technically losing money on, but as long as we're technically attempting. So I just wanted to include that with the packet as well, so we know where we're at, but we're halfway through the year, so we're right on track. But also to get thoughts on whether or not we want to move forward with the Ripsaw project.
Yeah, if we can, we can maybe help them guys out with the project a little bit, you know, it's part of what our rebate program is for. I certainly wouldn't have a problem with it.
I'll make a motion that we rebate Superior Water Sewer District three hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents on our electrical rebate program.
Motion on the floor by Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Two thousand fourteen mosquito spraying.
Bob wanted me just to include in the packets, kind of just an overview of what two thousand fourteen spraying was, chemical costs, the dates when they were spraying, so this is more of a FYI.
See that?
And that was last?
That was two thousand fourteen.
Did we spray more this year than two thousand fourteen?
Both the same. So far, it's about the same.
Good. Now, it sure seems to me like it's helping.
It is.
Lot of positive on it.
So, yeah, it was a good investment.
Did you ever find out, Bob, about the ponds, if the pellets?
There's a lot of money, I felt, yeah. Yeah, I got some prices on it, just seemed like it...
Do you need another license now to do that?
No, I can do it as long as it's...
Well, I think the spraying is doing wonderful now, and I, yes, we get complaints from where we have sedimentation ponds and...
And they are, they are thicker over there. I mean, I can tell, I can tell, it's kind of weird, because I can tell from the front of my house, to the back of my house, if you're out front, there's no problem, you go back a little closer to the pond and they get worse, but it's about five hundred percent better than what it was before we started spraying, I don't know.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's great, and I hear a lot of compliments from the residents, so...
It's a good investment. It's a nice little service we can offer. Thanks for that update, you guys. We have Minnesota Power two thousand fourteen fifteen update. Don, Bob, you guys were at the last annual meeting.
In your packet, you'll see, the handout that's in there is the handout that they gave Bob and myself when we were out there. They talk about their different costs that they have, the true-ups, they talk about formula-based rates, and how they come up with the figure that they pull off. The one you get to is on the last page, and that one there says, "We see that we're figuring a five percent increase in our electric." And then they said, "But the taconite mines are shutting down, and because of that, the rate will go up." They just didn't tell us how much more is yet, more or less in a nutshell.
So we know we're getting a minimum of a five percent increase.
Minimum of five.
Sounds like we know we're getting more than five.
Right, but we haven't gotten that definite number yet.
Sure.
Bob and I talked earlier, and we pretty much think that before the end of the month, they're going to have to, I mean, we'll know what it is, because that's, our billing cycle starts with them at the end of this month, so.
Was there any big expectations on true-up costs, and what those are going to do?
We actually got a rebate of, what was it, Scott? Twenty...
Over twenty-seven dollars.
Twenty-seven more dollars.
Almost $1,000 bucks, that's in here, too, I suppose.
Yes, that would also be in there.
But with the lack of sales from taconite plants, things of that nature, based on the way their company kind of works, if you don't sell it, they can come back after the wholesalers for...
And that will, that will bump our five percent up something, we don't know how much that is yet.
Okay.
That's what they're...
That works just on a base rate, or is that going to be in the form of a true-up?
No, that'll be base rate.
Okay.
Right now, we know, they've come in, they've said it is five percent, and then they said, "But..."
And they need to let us know in a timely manner, so that we can address where we're at.
We're hoping by the next council meeting, we'll have that figure from that.
Because our billing cycle is different than theirs, you know what I mean? So we could take a hit for one month's billing before we adjust or do something.
Not like we're going to go broke in a month.
No.
But, yeah, I know what you're saying, Mike, it'd be nice to have that information, so we can plan for it at least. And it would also be nice to give us time to let the, let the public know what those increases are going to be before they see it under billed.
Now, right now, we know for sure it's going to be point three-three-seven per kilowatt.
That's how much it's going to pop, yeah. It ends up being five.
For sure.
Right.
But we're going to get back to probably another one, two, three percent, we don't know.
At this point, it's just an informational thing.
Right.
It's nothing we can do until we actually hear the final number for that.
Thanks a lot, Don.
Yeah. That was a day trip.
I wasn't able to go along, because it was out of town.
I guess I'll just speak, too, we did have an update from the municipal group, out of the nineteen municipals, there's a small group negotiating on behalf of those.
Yep.
And we're getting pretty close to presenting something to Minnesota Power for contract extensions. Our contract ends in 2019, so we're negotiating to extend those contracts five years. So I guess we're negotiating hard on that end, too, so. Or that group is on our behalf.
Yep. All right, thanks, Bobby. So I guess we, so we can see on what the electric is going to do. We have some future street projects, SEH, Scott Edlund is here. Give us a feasibility or just kind of go over an estimate of feasibility studies. Scott, come on through.
Scott. Well, there's two proposals in your packet. One is from CH and one is from Brown InterTech. And this is all spilled out of a council meeting I was in at where we talked about future workshops, possible future street projects. Then I met with Scott and Bob on, um, in town here, uh, one morning and we looked at a few different things out there. Seemed like at least the priorities of the city coming out of that workshop were to look at. Centennial Avenue was one of them, um, basically from, uh, Street North down to, uh, Custer, Trunk Highway twenty-seven. And then Peter Avenue between Camnic and Alst, and Edward between Park and Fourth Street, so. So that, that was about two blocks of, uh, Edward Street, one on the Peter Avenue.
Well, I don't think.
Long stretch of, uh, Centennial, yeah. So we talked about a few different things, um, possible ways to attack it, you know, like construction techniques and everything. Starting in town for Peter Avenue and Edward Street, there is curb and gutter, more or less that's out there. It's in varying condition. There isn't much for storm sewer out there, so. I don't know that we know for sure if there's a ton of issues or anything, but the one thing on both of those segments of Edward and, and, uh, Peter is that there is water being underneath both of those. And so depending on if you wanted to do a project with Ripsaw, that, that would.
That's something you guys need to talk to Ripsaw about. I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for those guys and say, yeah, they're gonna wanna replace this word water and this is what.
Well, I'm just saying, what I'm getting at is it could change what kind of road rehabilitation technique you did on, on the project. Like you could look at a full depth reclamation type project versus.
What we're looking for on, on Peter Avenue is to basically, you know, get rid of the tar and, and, um, you know, maybe take eight inches out and bring in some new basin or shape it. That's kind of what we're looking to do there, you know. If you guys wanna think about putting some gutter in or whatever, you know, certainly look at that too, because someone should probably be done there, but.
Right, just kind of.
Anything above and beyond that, what, you know, we would wanna do as far as the city, you know, you have to talk to Ripsaw about.
Right, right, right. Just anytime we're looking at replacing the street surface and there's utilities below, it's a good time to just talk about it, because that's.
It's just the water main under it. The sewer's not under it either.
So then Edward's kind of in the same boat. And then over at Centennial, that's really just a street resurfacing project there. It's a rural section, so there's no curb and gutter on that. When I talk about full depth reclamation, what that is, if you're not familiar with it, it basically you go through with a mill, you grind up the bituminous, but then you actually mix it with the gravel, baseball, all in one operation.
Makes for a nice base, too.
Yeah, send you up kind of like a super classified, you know, all that work, because it's got the bituminous mixed in with it. And then if you, if you don't have curb and gutter, what's nice is that you can leave it there and then too, and then just pave over the top of it. You shape it and pave it. You, you're gonna have a little higher road, so you kind of have some minor issues with the shoulders, but it's typically not a big deal.
So wouldn't that, that road anyway, wouldn't make any difference?
In town, usually what happens if you have curb and gutter and you try doing that, you can certainly do it, but usually end up hauling out some of the material. Still can be a good technique, or you can change the crown of the road. Waste some of that material with the steeper crown, if you want. But if you're, if, if it gets into doing storm sewer and or other utility work, then it gets to be a little more. Not as much benefit to go that route, then it's more doing like, you know, here or your hollow, hollow material and bringing new stuff in.
Yeah.
So those are things that.
Save a lot of money on, right?
Right. So, I mean, what this proposal is for, I, I had three tasks. One is to do the feasibility report, because I'm assuming that if you did a street project, you'd assess for it, so you follow the assess, special assessment process. And part of that is doing feasibility, I'm just making assumptions, so.
Yeah.
Then you'd have to do a feasibility study. There's certain things that need to be in there and then if you, once you saw the results of that, if you wanted to keep moving forward, then the next step in that process is to have a public hearing. So that's what that task two is. And some of these areas are, like you said, are, I didn't say, but they're pretty flat and then there isn't much for storm sewer out there. So I mean, to really know if we can get away with not adding storm sewer, how much we need, I think you should take a serious look at possibly doing a total survey right now. That's what the task three was. I just kind of gave you an à la carte thing if you wanted to do that. And then that could be used to do design with and.
Do we not have a?
Moving forward.
We had a total survey done by WSN years ago. Do we not have access to that?
All streets come down?
We did the whole city back in.
Like a rip saw when it split.
Yeah.
I don't know how much of that.
I'm just saying, if we don't.
There's like air hill.
It's high in it? It was pretty good?
Yeah, it was. I thought we had a copy of it somewhere. I know we paid for it through WSN. That's ours. If we have ripsaws together, we should be able to. I'm just saying, if we don't have to do that and we have the availability to use it, why would we pay for it again?
Certainly, certainly a good thing to look into. Just a matter of if they're like, it depends on what level of accuracy it is. If it's like two. What we call two foot contours, then that's not good enough or what, I guess we're.
What I thought here was the flat stuff.
Was more detailed than just two feet, I.
I think.
I follow you.
That's a good point.
Saying all.
When you guys, when you say the topography, how often are you doing shots on a road like that?
It'd be section shots.
I know we did the whole city. Yeah, let's, I mean, let's look into it. I don't wanna spend money again if something's out there that we did already.
I, it's totally worth looking into. I'd be surprised if they did a detailed fill for the whole city.
Yeah.
Certainly could've.
Well, some research.
Yeah. So anyway, so the second part of this, what again goes along with looking at feasibility is, at least at some point, I mean, I always recommend doing the soil borings. Even if you don't do the project now, they're good in the perpetuity until you ever do decide to do the project. I mean, the survey is the same thing, but again, carry it out, that's, you know, good. So what, um, we did get a quote from Brown InterTech. This just shows you where the borings are that we, that I got price for. Basically, the red dots are where, where borings would be. So I'm looking at the page that shows Peter Avenue and Edward Street. There we'd be looking at two borings on Peter Avenue and four on.
I guess I'm not sure why we should bore all Peter Avenue when we only plan on doing up eight, probably eight inches of the street.
I guess I haven't consulted with Superior Sewer Water and their concerns on that street.
That's not our concern, that's not our cost. That'd be their concern and their cost.
What, what I would typically recommend if you're doing just the street, not doing water main, is to do like five footers. If you still, your street section is more than just that gravel, it's.
I understand that.
Subgrade underneath.
But when I look at a street that's thirty-four years old, Scott, and there's no humps, bumps or anything in it, and it's just flat, you know, why would we want to dig up that street? Total waste of money.
But, but you're right. I mean, there, there would be a, a rip saw out of fit to these if you went down with a ten feet, because your water main is, it needs covers.
Well, then we'd have to chip in on the.
Right. We did talk about that.
Base, I mean, not that it's our concern, but by getting a boring that deep, would that help them determine if they need to replace that water main or not?
It just tells you what the subsurface conditions are.
They're gonna bore it out because they wanna replace the waters or whatever. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's very possible. When you get down there, you know, you're not gonna be able to reclaim a lot of that, maybe none of it. So, yeah, you almost have to do it.
I mean, it tells you crowned water elevation, things may fluctuate, but it gives you a picture of that and what kind of soils are down there. If a contractor's gonna bid it, they want to know that kind of information as well as when they're putting together their bids. But it also tells you what the subgrade is as well. But anyway, so on, on those streets that have water main, it'd be ten foot borings if you're gonna do them. And then out at Centennial, I was just looking at five footers that's out there, but. And you can scale these back even further if you didn't wanna look at any of the subgrade. You can do even just some cores to know what pavement thickness you have in gravel. And you can scale it back.
Do a two, three foot boring then, or what do you say?
Yeah, they're probably, uh, one to two feet.
Do you save much as far as, I mean, if you go the extra three, four feet or what kind of value do you see in that two to three foot ring?
If you're just gonna, if you're just gonna mill and overlay it, you know, I don't think you're saving a whole lot of money going down eight feet versus five or four.
We're talking two compared to five.
Yeah, you ain't talking that much.
I guess what I've typically on the direct manner is five feet. If you're doing just street project, street work, you know, when you're out like that, deep storm or water, sanitary sewers.
Just go five.
Five footers. And then if you, well, if you have something more than that, then you go, whatever down to your utilities gonna be, it's a water main separately. Ten feet's gonna cover you. Sanitary sewers, a lot, a lot of times fifteen, twenty feet.
If you're gonna disturb the soil, it's a good idea, but you're gonna have to put back in basically.
Right. But again, just, I agree a hundred percent. If you're not gonna disturb anything, you know, if the road's subgrade is strong, the crown is still there, you don't have a lot of dips running. Those kind of distresses that are showing there is probably good. I would say for sure the pavement's shot up there though, as far as the bituminous servicing is.
It's all like, it's pretty good.
Everywhere, um. So it's just more data. A lot of times we'll do this during design, you know, if you were actually, go ahead with the project, just ride it forward now. The big one is for full depth reclamation. If you're gonna go that route, that mixing bituminous with the gravel.
How deep does that go?
You need to have specific proportions there, because you, you don't wanna mix the bituminous with like clay or something or, or black dirt or sand even for that matter. You wanna totally mix it with gravel. Base, you need to know what that thickness is, as to whether or not it's even an option. So that's why for sure I'd wanna do it out at Centennial, but I think it's good information on all the streets, but.
No, I think because if, if that process can be used, I think that would save us a lot of money.
But, but just to put it in perspective, at least as far as this specific proposal, whether you agree with it or not. The way they price borings is by the vertical foot typically. And so there's eighty vertical feet, um, where I asked for a price on. There's six borings that are ten feet deep and four that are five feet deep. And of that, if you went with my recommendation on the streets, you'd be doing fifty feet no matter what, so the extra thirty feet Ripsaw, so that's like thirty-seven and a half percent would be theirs. Sixty-two and a half percent city, if you follow that logic anyway, because the rest is mobilization, whatever progress, but.
Well, I think that if, uh, Ripsaw wants to, to, you know, check it, then they should pay their thirty-seven percent, have finance. Well, yeah, I think that, you know, maybe this is a, uh, kind of a workshop thing. We need to sit down with some Ripsaw board members and, and their staff and just figure out what exactly their plans are and how we go about doing this costly thing for that nature of the kind of nice.
Right.
We don't assume something, they don't assume something.
Right.
Can get paid for it though.
You know, their priorities are different than our priorities.
Oh, absolutely.
What they're working on right now on Peter Avenue North, which is number one, and these projects are our number one, so I can ask you a little give and take as far as, you know, we. I guess on Peter Avenue, we don't wanna do, in my opinion, a big total reconstruction on top and then also that water main is still fifty years old and there's random top surface. I guess that's their decision.
Yeah, but from our end, we're gonna figure out what it's gonna cost us to do what we wanna do. They wanna go above and beyond that. I mean, that's great, you know, but that's something they're gonna have to figure out and be okay for. As far as Scott's proposal, um, Scotty, can we work out some type of quick workshop before our next council meeting so we can sit down with those folks and maybe try and, um, I don't know if we have enough time for pulsing to get ahold of everybody or whatever, so we could sit down with some of their representatives and try and. This is a great way in.
Ripsaw, correct?
Yeah.
So we'll be doing that the twenty-seventh, so you'd have to do it, um, later this week. Try and schedule something. What do they have their meetings?
Scott, what, what are we looking for for actual construction start times this spring?
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to get a jump start, because just doing all those public hearings, it just takes time.
Takes time, because you have to pulse so many days out.
So, I mean, what I was looking at is coming back with a feasibility report just to present to council in September, but, you know, those dates can, can shift.
So we, we should get back to weeks or something. That would be the big hangup for you?
No.
Okay.
I mean, the, the goal is to try to bid it in the winter, I mean.
Right.
You can start spring or early summer.
Okay. Well, see if you can get ahold of them and then, uh.
Ripsaw's meetings usually are what, the second or first?
What is the other one?
Steph, you have a, come on now, committee, no one is at a meeting.
That guy goes, fuck.
Second.
Second Wednesday of the month.
It's a Wednesday.
It's like. It wasn't last. No, it wasn't last week though. Unless he totally missed it.
So lower is the twenty.
Okay.
Or they should.
Well, at least maybe we can sit down with some of their representatives in a workshop and, and.
So you're saying a workshop on the twentieth?
Correct, yeah.
So, I mean, it seems to work.
For now, let's, uh, table the feasibility study until we can sit down with those guys at that workshop, but we'll try and make that happen, you know, so we'll get some done for Scott, like his council.
I'm on vacation the next council meeting, so I won't be here for sure.
So we got an, we got an extra meeting in there?
So.
Oh, we're, we're still okay. Like you say, I mean, it is nice to bid these projects in the winter, because.
The weeks and months just slip away so easily, you know. Table and think once and there's two weeks, so it's just certainly, there's plenty of time, but I hate to say that.
No, we understand the urgency of trying to get this, but once we can get everything figured out, we have projects to make it up.
And even if you don't get a bid right way in the winter, bidding's bidding.
Well, we need it to for our own budgeting purposes the next year.
Right.
So we'll move on as.
Can we get a motion on the floor to.
I'll make a motion that we table the feasibility study on the Brown InterTech, uh.
Brown.
Sort of boring proposal.
Motion on the floor by Mike and second by Don, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carry unanimously. Thanks Scott for putting that together. Thanks Bob for your, uh, work on these projects. Really appreciate it. Keep that August date open. Keep a couple of days open in August, Bob. Oh, good. Uh, we got some building permits. Don's got a handful of stuff.
I, I have. So, uh, we'll start with, uh, the, uh, here's veterinary clinic. That title of science. Going in. Uh, it is five feet from the road from the curb and seven feet from the lot line and then it's eighteen from the back, so.
But it was obstructed and you want to.
Tall or short or all that stuff?
Five foot tall. Um, won't obstruct, I mean, from where he's got it. Um, won't obstruct, I mean, from where he's got it and where it sits. Sure that he's got. But for where, for where he's got listed. His curb here being six feet in, his house is here. Street comes like this. You can't see anywhere past it. There is no obstructions. Just his sign or something that I was looking at. And so it's gonna hit brick or whatever down below and just the sign. I'll, I'll pull it up if I can, you know, like.
I don't like this better. It's on the screen.
Stand up there. I could do that immediately. I can do that. If he pays enough, I'll do it.
There you go.
Uh, that's his.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna do a lot of ones that. It's just the. Second one is Jared Bozer and he's just adding a patio in his backyard, twenty feet, twenty-five feet by twenty-five feet. He's seventy-five feet off one side and twenty-five off the other. He's gonna block his garage. No problem with that one. Uh, next one is Kathy and Dennis Callambers. So hold it like this again so you can see it, but Kathy and Dennis' house is here. They own a trunk like this. They also own the rental property that are in the north. They're just looking at making this lot line go away and running it straight back. So if they ever decide to sell the house or the rental property, it just looks a lot cleaner and everything is clean up.
I would agree with that.
There was no issue in terms of their lot is still bigger than what the minimum is and they're actually increasing the size of this lot, which then helps that also for the resale.
Yeah.
So that was theirs. Next one is, uh, Neil Merrick Corp. Um, David has the actual plans and is going through the roof structure, but what they're doing is they're gonna close their, uh, deck. They're gonna put a roof on it and make it a three season porch. I don't know if Neil's moving out there or Merrick needs space, one or the other. But there's all they're doing is closing in their deck and they are sixty-six feet from that east lot line. So they're more than that. They're not adding on the house. They're just gonna cover it. Uh, the last one that I have is Sabrina Frye and that is for, it's on Park Avenue and that's for a shed. We were out there tonight and we measured, um, they have listed twenty feet by twenty feet and they are actually, it's, they're about seventeen feet. They're twenty feet from the edge of the building, but we told them you have to go by the lot line. I mean, they're over. And they're seventeen feet and the minimum is ten, so they're fine with that. Now, there is a utility easement back there and they understand that for some reason of we have to go through and dig it up. They have to move.
It's not on weed out.
There's no, no, no foundations. It's, it's on, uh, wood.
Okay.
Yeah. That is all that I have.
Very good, Donny. Uh, we would need a motion to approve a lot split from the Callambers and the building permits. So that'd be two separate motions. Uh, you can do it one if you want before I can get an approval. I make the motion for the lot split to approve that for the Callambers. Motion on the floor to approve the lot split for Dennis and Kathy Callambers.
I'll second that.
By Mike, yes. Second by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We will also need a motion to approve the permits.
I'll make the motion.
Here's a motion on the floor for Gina, get a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by standing aye. Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have some department reports. Bobby O, Public Works.
The only additional I had was a, uh, I had a call from, um, for some recycling bins. Ray Rig Pacific Company. It's the exact same bins that we have right now. I guess I'd like to add the, um, emblem on there that says property of, and then the city local. And I don't know if that would be colored or just black and white, but, um, basically eight dollars per recycling bin and then a three hundred and twenty-five dollar one-time brand clay feet, um, for a total of twelve seventy-five with the rate. Basically twelve dollars and seventy-five cents per recycling.
Is that just on our ones then, Bob? We want to go around and do the existing?
Right. And right now we offer the recycling bins free of charge or new.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's a good.
Yeah.
And it just is a little less. Yeah.
I'd make the motion to approve, what's her name by the phone, please?
Ray Rig.
Ray Rig, Pacific Company's proposal on, uh, new recycling bins for about twelve hundred?
Twelve seventy-five.
Twelve seventy-five. Motion on the floor by Mike, get a second to approve.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Aye. Thanks a lot, Bobby. And thanks again for your help on that tough street stuff.
Yep.
Chief wasn't gonna be here tonight and Daniel wasn't gonna be here tonight.
We have to get back to the agenda.
Remember? Yeah, that's right. Let's get through the rest of these department reports. Just a quick FYI. Toby and I had a park board meeting last Monday night and numbers are good. We're having a really good year down there at the Gulf Grace and the whole complex, so. Things are looking pretty good though. Actually having a really good year. It's a weather driven business.
Yeah.
It's a weather state's business. We shouldn't do all right. Um, Brian, or Scotty, I'm sorry, what do you got?
I don't have anything. Just have the, just the resolution that's.
Okay. Um, did you guys have a chance to take a look at this resolution? Weird, does anybody understand? And Bob, maybe you, you probably know. Well, this is for the North End.
This is the county project.
County Road Thirty-Nine. What, what does the city have there? I mean, are they just looking for our pool to take? Bob, why don't you come up and explain? Bob was at a meeting. Good. Does the county rule, is that, is the county rule?
Yeah, we actually met last week with, um, Morrison County and Mr. Tracy from Modern District. And we discussed improvements on Third Avenue North, basically from the trailer park down to Camden Street. The water service district has problems with their water lines freezing. It's very shallow. So the county had scheduled the Mill and Overly project and just the purpose of that meeting was discuss whether they want to do a total reconstruction, which would involve curb cutter, sidewalk, all that. So basically we decided at that meeting that it would be a good idea upon your approval to move forward with, um, project, more of a reconstruction project rather than the Mill and Overly, seeing the needs of.
Do we know what the city's responsible for?
No. Basically this is just starting the process.
Right. One thing we look at is the trail grant.
Right.
Extending that initial trail grant from two thousand and five, I think it was, connecting that up to, is it Edward, uh, Edward Street is where that sidewalk came?
Centennial. Oh, where the sidewalk ends.
Correct. Getting those and then on the trailer park right now. We want to consider putting that sidewalk.
Stop siding. Stop just after.
We have no sidewalk from, uh.
We can't walk up to Edward.
Yeah, from like Rosetta, wherever's west, there's no sidewalk on either side.
And you didn't say what, what they take out as far as sidewalk they do have to replace.
Correct.
And you and I talked a little bit about when that project was done last time, the, when they replaced the sidewalks, they dropped the road about that far and they didn't meet the sidewalks of people. They just left steps. They, when they, when they redid it, it was a big problem and then since then they had trouble. You remember.
Well, that was before my, but yeah, that was called the North End project at that time.
Yeah, we were living in town at the time and they had a lot of problem with the sidewalks were replaced, but they were replaced at an eight inch drop or whatever it was. And then since then they've had lots of trouble with the, especially at first they had a lot of trouble with things freezing up there because they didn't put the cover on it and that kind of thing. So it needs to be kind of, we need to be involved somehow.
This resolution is just saying that it just gives us.
Start the process.
Start the process and that we would look at being responsible for any extras we would put in as far as sidewalk.
Our hope would be to.
Looks to me like it says, uh, well, this is what they plan on doing. So our responsibility would be storm sewer sidewalk. I guess I'm not sure with the trails, surfaces.
That, yeah.
Curb cutter. Okay.
At this point, I don't think we're spelling out who's responsible for what.
No, it's just.
It's just a go off there to bring the start.
So we can start the planning phase.
Does this have a resolution number or?
This was a resolution that we decided that they would construct for us. This came out before Morrison County.
Okay.
The county would like to see council approval before they perform.
All right. I guess at that time Gina, you want to read that resolution?
Um, resolution requesting improvements to county and state aid highway thirty-nine and county state aid highway forty-three. Whereas the city of Peers, Rich Period Sewer Law and Water District, then Morrison County, each has an interest in infrastructure improvements that may be made on county state aid highway thirty-nine and county state aid highway forty-three. Third Avenue from Centennial Street to Camden Street and whereas the, these improvements may consist of expands, expansion or replacement of sewer main, water main, storm sewer, sidewalk, trails, surfaces, apparatuses, curb, gutter and bituminous street in the design of Seddon Way. And whereas the city of Peers would prepare to participate in a twenty twenty construction project. Now therefore be it resolved, Peers City Council requests that the Morrison County Board of Commissioners authorize programming the bulk reference project in their twenty twenty transportation improvement program and be it further resolved that the city of Peers will authorize staff to negotiate a preliminary construction agreement outlining the terms and conditions of each of the three parties' responsibilities for each jurisdiction's consideration before the design begins dated this fifteenth day of July two thousand and fifteen.
Thanks. Get her a copy of the resolution, the motion to have this approved.
I'll make the motion.
Motion on the floor by Don.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. I think we have treasurer's report. Linda, we got anything going on?
Yes. Checkbook balance. Balance with the bank statement on June thirtieth was nine hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. And there were no CDs too.
Please note it is higher is because we see portion of tax that was.
Second portion. Uh, we leave a motion on the floor to accept treasurer's report. Make that motion. Motion on the floor by Mike. Seconded by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, we have our claims for the one.
There's one addition to the claims. Very last one. I had, uh, the police department had sent something uncertified and it was for six dollars and seventy cents. It's gonna be on the.
Six seventy-five?
Yeah, or six dollars and seventy cents. I didn't think it was necessarily the top of the other twenty pages. Six dollar bill. But that was added.
Nobody has any questions about the claims. We will need to have those approved along with the six dollars and seventy cents for the registered letter.
I make a motion. We pay the bills.
This is a motion on the floor from Steph. Can we get any second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Don, all those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Anybody else have a complaint? Scott, we be looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion on the floor by Gina.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody.